Okay, just keep working on it. All right, in about 10 seconds.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to call to order the meeting of the city council September 13th, 2021. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Thank you. Will you please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We are having some technical difficulties where the audience can hear us, but we are having trouble right now here in the audience. So if you would like to make a comment, call into the number and then we can patch you in by cellphone for your comments. So, other than that, welcome everybody tonight to the Monday meeting. First of all, we have public comments scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. So, we have a proclamation tonight recognizing Rochester resident Dorothy Anderson celebrating her 100th birthday. So we have a little resolution for Dorothy tonight. So whereas Dorothy Anderson of Rochester was born December 9th, 2021, whereas Dorothy will celebrate her 100th birthday on December 9th, 2021, whereas Dorothy's life is filled with love from her children, five children, and many grandchildren, and her late husband James, who she married in 1939 and spent 37 years with. Whereas Dorothy has remained a charter member of her local garden club for over 70 years and spent her career managing the office for Anderson Printing and Company. And whereas Dorothy shall celebrate this extraordinary milestone surrounded by her closest family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that I, Stuart Bix, and Mayor Rochester, and extend also the city council our sincere congratulations to Dorothy Anderson on her 100th birthday, December 9th, 2021. So one, congratulations Dorothy, and I do, I did do a little research. In 1921, the President of the United States was Warren G. Harding from Ohio.
Feel free to call in whenever.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm hearing everything fine right now.
And we can hear you.
We can hear you. So it all works.
Yeah, it's, it's working.
Great. So, Warren Harding was president when she was born. Fielding Yost was the Michigan football coach. And Michigan football did not play their games at Michigan Stadium yet. They played at Ferry Field. So that's how long ago that was. So, congratulations Dorothy. Would you or someone from the family like to say anything?
Um, no, um, as your proclamation says, my mother Dorothy Anderson's 100 years old. So I'm recording this to show it to her offline, but I very much appreciate it and she'll be delighted to see the recognition that's coming from the, here in the council. So thank you very much.
Very good. And tell your mom, congratulations from all of us.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Happy birthday, Dorothy.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Okay. Next is a discussion with DTE Energy, which we are not going to have tonight because DTE cannot make it. They are going to make it allegedly the next meeting. So if anybody would like to make a comment, but Councilmember Albrecht.
Um, yeah, I, I responded to Blaine when we all received the email very shortly before this meeting, which was the same MO we had at the previous meeting. So my concern is that the rep we have with DTE might not be the best rep for us. And the fact that we're letting another two weeks before she speaks to us is disrespectful to the residents of Rochester that went through up to five days of no power, disrespectful to city administration and city council in that we requested her, excuse me, we requested a representative, I don't want to make this about her. I want a representative from DTE to be here at our last city council meeting and to get a notice less than two hours before the meeting suggests that we are not as important to them as we think we should be.
Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah. So I did talk with Jennifer's boss before noon today. So it was, I would still say, you know, last minute. They've actually turned down all communities. And that's where her boss actually wanted to let me know that they'd be setting a precedent if they met with us. What they've told every community is they are working with our county executive. And on the 20th, all of the city managers, mayors, and township supervisors are in that meeting. However, you know, at my, my request, again, our representative's boss is the person who I spoke with. He did agree to send somebody to our next meeting, which would be after the 20th. And then he felt that they would be honoring what they've told all of the other communities. So I, I don't want to, you know, again, they, they know and he was actually going to another part of Michigan to respond to a, you know, another electrical event tonight. So they've just had a really hard time with the storms this year. And they did provide me with a, a link that I'm, I'm going to be posting on the city's website. So if there, you know, are the complaints, I again relayed the council's frustration on behalf of yourselves as well as our residents. I, I think really their, their challenge right now is they've, they've told every community that they would not be coming to over 60 communities, one by one, that they were going to be working through the counties. And at this point, I do believe we will have somebody here in two weeks, you know, to participate if it's through Zoom or, or in person. So I do think they, they, they want to be here. I think they're just trying to honor their, their word to everybody else in these other communities that they, they would not be meeting. And I think they, they feel after the 20th that they've honored that part. And then if they have these one-on-ones, that they would do. So I just wanted to explain at least what I know.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, that wasn't in the email we received today. And I, I just, if that was their case or their MO, we should, we, you should have been made aware of that after the last city council meeting. So we knew, then we don't have to set our expectations, put it on the agenda, and then find out, you know, two hours before the meeting. If that was their MO that they're going to meet with county executives and city managers on the 20th and then they'll fulfill their obligations, fine. We just want to be informed. We want to feel that we're being heard. And, and when I say we, I'm talking about all the residents of Rochester.
Councilmember Peterson?
No, thank you, Mayor. So, no, and I, I appreciate you giving the update regarding that. And I do know that County Executive Colter did put something out regarding that as well and working with them. So I, I'm not as upset over the fact that they're not here tonight. I do appreciate the fact that they are meeting at the county level so they can address the issues that all of the communities around here are experiencing because that is where more federal funding can come from for the infrastructures at the county level than here individually. So I think that's a very important meeting that they should be at. And I, I look forward to hearing what they have to say. And I, I assume you will be there?
I will be.
Okay.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
I think enough said on that subject. Is there any further public comment, Brian?
I am not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. Next on to approval of the minutes is consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2021.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage? Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of consent agenda. First is a water and sewage rate resolution updated with rates approved from the August 23rd council meeting. Next is consideration of a special event application from the Brixi Way to hold the Brixi Way Half Marathon on Sunday, September 26th. Next is a consideration of special event application from Father Baumgartner's Knights of Columbus to hold their annual Tutschi Roll Drive to benefit mentally challenged, I'm not sure that's the proper wording, I think it's special needs individuals on October 8th through 10th at Maine and University. And review of the current 2021 special event calendar.
So moved, like to remove A.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht without A. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and before we go on this, Mr. City Manager, do you want to explain why A is on there?
Sure, sure. So at our last council meeting, staff failed to actually have a resolution. So talking with our attorney and the finance department, the proper way based on our, our procedures is to bring it forward to council with a resolution. And as it was approved at the last meeting, I felt that it would fit underneath consent.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. And no, and I, I pulled it because reading through it, only on page two of the resolution at the top do we put the definition of what MEU is. And I just felt that it would, might be more fitting if we added it to the top of, somewhere on page one before we start with the water rate schedule. So when people are reading it, they're not looking to page two.
If that's council's direction, we can make that change.
So is that a motion, Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia. Discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have no old business or table items. We do not have a public hearing, legislative deliberations. First is a report, a regular business is a report regarding attorney fees. I believe Councilmember Peterson wanted this as an agenda item.
Did? So, and I thank city attorney and the other attorneys for providing that information. I hadn't really spoken to anyone regarding this or knew that it was going to be in the packet. So I haven't had a chance to really, you know, question or ask anything, so. But basically, the premise was to show a breakdown of how the attorneys have been used within the city administration on a regular basis since last year, which both of them did show a breakdown from the COVID, et cetera, and other items. Not real specific, but it did give some of that information. So if there's anything else that's needed after really reviewing it and asking questions, I will let you know, City Manager.
Sounds good. Okay. Further discussion?
Okay. Next, on to receive a report from the various boards and commissions. First, we have a report from the Grant Committee. Councilmember Peterson?
All right, in the package you will see that Anthony did supply a list of the grant updates that have been either applied for and are being worked on or in the process of being explored based on, you know, comments of suggestions of what we are looking to do here in the community. And again, however, a lot of these we cannot do much with without having the projects ready to go. And we did receive word today, like even on the community garden, that we need to be reaching out to other venues like we did at the very beginning when we first started the community garden. That was with Fiskars and Home Depot are the ones who did help get our gardens going. And that would be something that I know Dinosaur Hill has been working on right now with that as well, doing those. Skate park, we, I had spoken with former Mayor Dalton regarding that. And I know that there was some work in progress with that in Dinosaur Hill and Sioux regarding that. So I know they are, have a lot on their plate, so I haven't heard anything lately. Right now, those electric charging stations, though, they're still looking for opportunities for those and any grants that are available. And the other ones are the community splash pad, the water storage and pumping station through Gleewa, our park pass, which, that we've actually talked about in the past many times about doing that and getting those taken care of. And it's just finding the funding for that as well. And that leads into the trails and the sidewalks, which we've actually been, had that in many past meetings. And then the bank erosion mitigation, that too was something that, that would have been with the trailways, commissions, et cetera, for, for those. So I'm not sure where those are at, but those are the ones that Anthony put together showing what had the companies that we have utilized to get us the various grants and do the grant writing for us or find that information is what they have given us an update on. Any questions?
Good question. Councilmember Albrecht?
Councilmember Peterson, who's on the grant committee?
Me and Anthony and Alan from the Community House. And who else is on there?
There's Linda.
Yeah, Linda, Linda, she's the one, she's the grant writer.
Yep.
And then we, Linda Kirksey Davis. And then we had Melissa, but she hadn't been there yet. She was from the trailways. And then Sue Neil, of course, and then Colin.
Another point, just with electric charging stations, perhaps when DTE comes here, I'm, I'm being really serious, that, you know, that might be a way for us to leverage some of our discontent by maybe seeing what kind of grants or opportunities they have to put some additional charging stations in the city, so.
And we'd have to look at who did the last one, Blaine.
Yep, we currently actually have a request for proposal out for electric charging stations, so.
That's in the first part, yeah.
Yeah, so, but definitely something that we can talk with DTE about. Okay.
And there is, oh, one more thing. There is a huge, there is huge support for the dog park as well. So that is something that will be discussed and hopefully we can, that one is more of private funding. The people really would like one, so we would have to really discuss it before we move far, further along to actually make that happen because that's something that could easily happen as long as we have the blessing of the police chief, fire chief, for, you know, whatever that's going to entail for liability purposes and probably the attorney's looking into that for us as well. Because the people really would like to have that and we'd have to find that location that is suitable. Right now, I know there was discussion regarding the park, Howlett Park. Yes, because it's pretty passive there right now and underutilized, so. But back when we did the park layouts with all the different parks and how we felt, or the community felt that they should be, that one was one that everyone had wanted to stay as passive. So, but, you know, now we have an overwhelming amount of support for different events to take place in the community to have these opportunities because everyone else is getting them, so.
I think there's, thank you, I think there's overwhelming support as long as it's not in your backyard, right? So I think that's going to be an issue. Because that park is in my backyard. I would think my neighbors would not be for that. So I mean, you're going to, but you're going to have that wherever you go. All right. Okay, next, we receive a report from the Historical Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The commission enjoyed its first in-person meeting since COVID, so there was a lot of excitement. And they've identified three of their priorities since they will have some time to, to work on them. Obviously Founder's Day coming up this next March, the Greater Rochester Heritage Days Festival to do some additional planning to really make that return to the park a, a good event. And continue to work on sales of the DUR Railroad book, so that's their focus right now.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. Where can we purchase that book?
That book can be purchased right here at City Hall. You can purchase it at the library, you can purchase it at Catching Fireflies, you can purchase it, I think, at Lytle. But I know we have plenty here at City Hall.
Yeah, and the DDA.
DDA's handling.
Yeah, the DDA has some as well, and also the museum.
I think, do we still have any, signed by Bob Michalka?
I think there's still maybe under 20, but I believe there's still.
Okay, yes, signed by the author.
Love it, thanks.
Mr. City Manager, are we getting feedback from Mr. Sage's? No, not now. I could hear something. Okay.
Somebody could have been unmuted on, on the.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we receive a report from the Planning Commission. I will, I will do that. We had a very robust Planning Commission meeting. First, we did allow the Rochester School of Martial Arts to move to Second Street. They had a couple of things that the owner of the property has to do with parking stripes and some planting, some shrubs and stuff they have to do that he's agreed to do. So the martial arts studio will be moving over there. Then we had a public hearing for consideration of the Par pharmaceutical lot. We're still working through some issues, so we did not have, we had the public hearing, but we're still waiting for them to produce some more information, some scoring on some things and some questions they had to ask for a 100,000 square foot new warehouse building on site. So we're making progress towards that and it's, to me, it's very good that they're, they are investing in our community and are going to stay. And so that's very exciting. Next, we had the very exciting thing is we did approve the Rochester Community House at long last. So now they are free to start construction as soon as they can get construction started. So that was kind of a milestone. Mayor Protem and I talked to Alan and they are trying to get construction started as soon as they can get approval and engineering approval and get bodies out there. So the Community House is going to be starting. And then finally, we had a consideration review of the master plan draft and recommending it. The Planning Commission did not approve starting the 60-day process because they felt like there wasn't enough time to consider it. It's, it's a pretty big document. There really, I don't think, is any great time crunch. And then frankly, there's some questions about some of the things in the planning, the master plan document that people on the Planning Commission, and I also think, talking to people on council that people, you know, want to talk about. So before they, we send this out to, you know, the different groups, Planning Commission wants to take another look at it. We're going to look at it. We have a meeting coming up in this month again. But again, it's going to be interesting to see how that works out because there's some trepidation about some certain things in that master plan.
Uh, Mayor.
Or Peterson?
Yeah, so if maybe you have some time this week, you can reach out to me and let me know what some of those things are, since we haven't discussed any of that.
Yeah, and, and some of the things were, we, we never really discussed it as, as, it was more just, we're going to discuss it the next meeting because people didn't feel like they had enough time. So I'm, I'm happy to reach out, but there wasn't a lot of specifics. Just people had, well, I have some issues with maybe this section and that section. We really haven't gotten into the, the, yet.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. And it, all of councils should know too that we received the, the copy, the draft to all of councils. So we all have that. And it is a pretty big document. So you might want to start looking at it, have some conversations, talk about it because it takes some time to process.
I, I already did, so that's why I was wondering what some of the issues.
I think it was, I think it was issues on housing and some of the zoning things were, you know, some of the issues that people were talking about. Okay, next, we receive a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a vacancy on the commission right now. And I just wanted to double check with our city clerk that that vacancy has been posted and we've done all the right things to put a call out for applicants.
Then we can, we have a special call for that one to call it out. So I guess we could do a six-month call and list all the ones that are open because there's a fire field. But, but that's typically what we have once, once a year. And then the wards, if they have openings, if they have suggested and have applicants, then they can have them apply, so.
Can people apply at any time?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to encourage people.
Yes, and we don't have, if we had current ones, then we would order them on.
Okay.
Councilmember Albrecht?
We also have the library more as well. It's also a DDA vacancy. There's a couple of alternates that are needed for the border review. The conversation.
To maybe, maybe send out another email to, with the current openings?
I think that would be good because we have so many vacancies. It's, it'd be nice to see these seats get filled.
I just, I was just going to emphasize the power of social media. When I was looking for a Ra-Ra board member, I put it out on Facebook and that's how I found somebody to, who would then apply. You know, I told them how to go through the process and I just put on my post, so I know.
It's a good idea.
You can, you know, you have a pretty powerful network also. It might be a way to get, get the word out there and maybe some of the other people, Tammy Byers or Laura Murphy, who, or Rachel can also do the same thing, so.
That's great because we are, we are looking for someone. So if anyone's interested who's listening or in the public, we have availability. The Rochester Pollinators is staying very busy. That subcommittee has done a number of events around the community to help, you know, inform, do informational talks about pollinators and their importance. And we also have a native plant sale at the farmer's market coming up on the 18th and the 25th. We got an update on the GBB mural that's going in at the municipal park. The concept designs were beautiful, so we felt very happy at the committee level. It's a very natural landscape with flowers and butterflies. And I think it'll be an asset to the park and fit in with the nature scene within it. So we were excited for those concepts. We want to present them to council in mid-October. So that's what we're hoping for right now. We also have a new tree that was donated, an autumn blaze maple for Howlett Park. So we wanted to, to thank the donor for, for that generous gift. And that was all we had for right now.
Good.
I had one more, Mayor?
Councilmember Albrecht?
I, I know you guys do a great job on the Good Neighbor Award. And I noticed the last two quarters were from the subdivision I live in. So I was just, you know, I just want to, I hope that we can maybe solicit or try to get some people from the other side of town. There's some beautiful homes and people have done a lot of good things. So just spread the, spread the Good Neighbor Award around the city a little more.
Absolutely. We're always taking applications for a good neighbor. So if you have a good neighbor, please put in that application. We haven't made the, the third quarter selection yet.
Okay, thank you. Next, we receive a report from the Facilities Committee. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Albrecht, Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, I can start and other council members can join in. So the meeting was held on August 25th. First, we discussed the Community House project update. So I don't know if my request to have the visual to put up on the screen was, was that able to be done? Or we didn't get that?
I don't know if we. I don't know. Yeah.
All right. Well, I, I had just wanted to have for the, the public record, some of the images and the visuals now fully approved through Planning Commission. So maybe we can just do that in another meeting. Then we did start talking about the community garden. Kind of need to have some more discussion on that, kind of back to the grant committee, but we are looking to expand it. I did walk that area over the past week or so and I think we need to have some more discussion at the facilities level about that. We talked about the City Hall vestibule update. And then we also spent some time talking about the Amoresco Report, which lists all of the kind of annual maintenance improvements scheduled for all city facilities. So kind of working through that report to make sure that we're on track doing our maintenance. And I think that's it, unless other members want to say anything else?
I would just like to add regarding the Amoresco Report, if we can actually just have it then grouped by building more so it's not looking like it's all duplicated through there. I know what you went through and did that, but just it would make it a lot easier so then we can actually stay on task and you're not going all the way through the document to do that.
Yep, the software does allow it to, to be broken by building, so happy to do that.
Very good. Next, we receive a report from the Tree Committee. Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. We welcomed our newest member, Councilmember Sage, to our, to our August 31st meeting. We had previously had reported out that we had an iTree canopy report. This was a, a third party that we had, they used a software system called iTree. And we had asked the, somebody from the, the firm to walk us through the packets. And one of the things we were pleased to find out was that, as I mentioned in a prior report, that we have 30% coverage. But the context, we didn't know that, when I reported last time, that they, according to the, the person who spoke to us, this is exceptional for a residential area. 40 is a. Forty is a goal that is... If you hit forty, you're truly doing a wonderful job, but they're pretty pleased with that. They... When they do this report, it's trees, not shrubs. It's truly a thousand points throughout the city, so it's a pretty accurate report. We then talked about the, you know, Rochester, the fifty trees, and really Rochester one-hundred-and-fifty trees for residents, and then fifty trees where the city were... We're going to... Was going to plant, was coming to the fall. So just to restate, what we had for residents was an ability to get a reimbursement of up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars through the Tree Bait Program. We asked a city manager wing to include it in the next newsletter so that we continue to promulgate that information. Then on the other half, the fifty trees that the city plants, we had talked about the community garden, planted some trees there. Nick was a little concerned with some of the soil there and wanted to look at that in the whole context of the community garden before he could commit to that. But to date, we have planted over twenty-two trees. Many of them are city trees along the boulevard in front of people's homes, but then there were two trees at the Avon Cemetery, the Butterfly Garden, the Prank Creek Trail at Letica that Councilmember Sage has always been, you know, asking about, and have finally been planted. So we'll see more trees planted in the fall. But again, we urge residents that if you want to plant trees, we have a forester on staff with Nick Banda. We have a Tree Bait Program that will help you pay for the installation of the tree through nurseries that you can select from a list we've provided in the Tree Bait Program. So we're pretty pleased about that, and we will continue to meet. And I thought we had... Our next meeting, I know I had written down here, our next meeting will be October fifteenth. So... But all members were present at the August thirty-first meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Next, for new business...
I have a question there.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. I was wondering, are there plans to do a fall tree planting along the boulevards for people's... In front of people's homes?
I don't know that. Maybe Nick can... If Nick is on, he can jump in.
Yep. Yeah, we're having... The answer is yes, Mr. Mayor, but we are having a hard time finding trees. It was a brutal summer tree stock. So if we can get trees... We've already found the Autoplasm, Howlett, and a couple of other trees, so we're going to keep going a little higher up in the state and see if we can find them. So our plan is, we're actually going to go to another source other than Sherman's Nursery, because they've been our go-to folks, and they always have trees, but they're struggling also. The goal is yes, but if we'll know here in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Very good. Next, onto new business for referral miscellaneous. Any more public comment, Brian? Any public comment here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've not seen any.
Okay. Comment here? No? Okay. Next is receipt of the check register report and the city manager's update. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet, we have the August twenty-sixth, the September second and September ninth check register reports, and then there's also my miscellaneous manager updates. Just want to highlight a few things. We had a great turnout, and although I only saw through video and photos from our nine-eleven memorial celebration, I heard it was a great ceremony and well-attended and was very respectful, and the flags that were placed out were nicely done. In addition, in my update, I noted in response to the Hurricane Ida down south that two of our firefighters have gone down to help, and I've included a few pictures that they've seen, you know, that overall devastation. Tonight, if council's okay, I wouldn't mind putting up on our website, you know, like through the Red Cross or something like that, so if our residents would like to donate, that there would be a link. I know they've continued to show through photos and just how devastated really the, you know, the communities have been impacted, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I had for tonight.
Very good. Madam Clerk, anything tonight?
Yes, an election update. Through today's mail, we've already received back seven-hundred-and-thirty-one requests for absentee ballots, and it has not began to slow down yet, so you can expect that number to grow quite a bit. What I will do to help you guys is this Friday, the eighteenth, I'll have a list available of those that have already requested, and then I will have a second list on Friday, the twenty-fourth, with the expectation that all ballots will be mailed out Tuesday, September twenty-eighth. And that's all I have right now.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Glad you could come.
Thank you.
Mr. Banda, do you have anything?
All set, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Albright?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Peterson, because I think she'll probably talk about the vision session tonight, or...
No, I wasn't going to. It's coming up on the twenty-ninth, though.
Yeah, I just... Yeah, I just wanted to remind people.
Well, Wednesday's our meeting, so, yeah, Wednesday's our DDA meeting, and the visioning session is the twenty-ninth, which I know they have out on the website and everything else for the DDA.
At the Royal Park Hotel.
Correct. So if anybody, any council members want to attend, just let, I guess, Christie know for that session.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mayor Protam Salvia?
Yes, just a few exciting things in the city of Rochester. So the OPC is having an Oktoberfest this Thursday outside in the south parking lot, so trying to appeal to the younger demographic that the OPC serves to have a new event outside. Also, the Community House fundraising for the inside is actually being kicked off tonight. They're having a separate fundraising committee tonight meeting. The first goal is to fundraise for the tent that will be put up outside, so while construction's going on, events and things can still happen. So they're looking for six, probably businesses in the community to donate three thousand dollars, so that will fund the tent. And then we'll start working on the inside fundraising. Again, the goal is half a million dollars. Two-hundred thousand goes to do the kitchen inside, but that committee is already working, and they are partnered with the Community Foundation in partnership to do that. So good work is happening, probably even as we speak.
So that's eighteen thousand for the tent? Six times three... Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then also, Mayor, State of the City, October sixth?
Yes.
Okay. That is all.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. RIAA had its first meeting last week since school started again, so we're excited to be meeting, and I just wanted to remind residents that if you know a student in need of some sort of financial aid to help with summer camps or other activities, that, you know, we're looking for kids to be able to help and looking for more opportunities to get our name out there as well, that RIAA is here to support families who might need it in this school year. And also, the budgeting committee was able to meet, and maybe Councilmember Salvia or Albright can add to this, but I think that the highlight of that committee meeting was really that we're exploring investment opportunities, short-term investment opportunities in a zero-interest economy, and we met with Morgan Stanley and some other advisors, just an exploratory meeting to start those conversations.
Very good. I think it's always worth looking at that kind of stuff. Councilmember Peterson?
Just a couple of things, thank you. First one is, in the minutes at the last meeting, we talked about the compensation for the clerk, but it was... It was stated that it was compensation was an adjustment, and I don't know if it was ... But was it changed from three to two and a half? Because that's what I felt an adjustment meant, so I didn't know if it was... I don't know if that word just needs to be...
I worded it that way because that's what the resolution that was adopted by council for the clerk and treasurer oversee, that city manager would recommend a compensation adjustment, so.
Yeah, but it's an actual raise, so it's not an adjustment, like we didn't take something away from you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something we took away.
It was not.
Because an adjustment would have made it like that we took it away.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
It was not. Thank you.
Next, and I do know in the budget meeting minutes, there was a document regarding the investment policy for the city, and I know I just... It says the investment policy was adopted by the city council on April twenty-second, twenty nineteen, but it was really adopted on December twentieth, twenty-ten, and I think we should actually change it to be then amended on April twenty-second, so we keep the flow of when the original document did take place, so we can find it for historical purposes, because then we would know how far back to go. Also, going through the website, I still see that we have a lot of job openings on there, and I know I'm hearing that things are not going extremely well in all areas that we have, and I do think that we need to have these positions filled sooner rather than later. And I also wanted to bring up again, I did bring it up before, the executive assistant position that we have here that is vacant now. And that used to be the number-one seat that was most important here in the city, because it was the person who was the go-between between the city manager, the clerk, and everybody else to make sure everything stayed together, focused, everything. So it's a very important position, and I think that we're hurting ourselves by not having that, really looking for that quality of person, and hopefully we will this time out, because changing it to that communications person did not help matters, because that's really not what that position really entails. So I would hope that we can move forward doing that. I don't think that our city manager should be wearing so many hats. I think it's doing a disservice to the community right now. We have too many big things that he is responsible for, and we should have people in these positions taking care of all these other items. I don't want to hear anymore that there's so much angst going on with employees and things like that, because it's not helping us. We're trying to come out of a bad last year. We're trying to make progress with a lot of things that we're planning to do and things like that. I think that it is putting our city manager in a bad spot, and I don't... I think that we have to have a solution, so is there a solution anytime soon? Because we're almost to the end of the year, and I can tell you right now that our DPW ran very well on its own back when we did not have a DPW director back there, because we have some of the most qualified individuals working there that know their jobs and everything else. I don't want to see us lose that continuity that we have there because of this transitioning that's not moving along.
So if they're looking for an update, we've narrowed... So city council authorized, and we hired a search firm. They did a full process, received twenty applications. They have gone through and narrowed that list down to eleven. They're actually interviewing those eleven individuals this week. During this month, we'll have our first round interviews along with a visit. As I've shared with council the schedule previously, we anticipate making an offer in mid-October. So that's still on schedule, and I continue to meet weekly with, you know, my department directors. I'm not aware of, I guess, any angst. I am working over at Public Works from seven o'clock in the morning till three-thirty, and then I come over to City Hall. So, you know, thank you. I am putting in those extra hours. You know, it was just really a week ago that our executive assistant position was vacant, so that's out there for basically about a month. Prior to that person leaving, we did post it, so I believe it's the twenty-fourth of this month that that deadline is out. We've already received three applications for that position, as of when I looked at it this morning. The other intern positions are also open to the twenty-fourth. We have two interviews tomorrow for those two positions. In addition to that, we do hire seasonal positions for our Public Works Department, and we've received one application thus far for that. So that starts with our leaf season through winter. We've actually started ahead of time, so I think we're not really missing a beat, as being the acting Public Works Director. I've kind of shuffled around after meeting with almost every Public Works employee, and I think it was two meetings ago that, I think it was one of the union representatives actually asked me to stay as the Public Works Director and not consider being the city manager. So I took that as a compliment, that we're actually making a lot of progress over in Public Works, and I continue to see, you know, several individuals over there really step up, and I'm glad that I've been able to help those individuals actually make some adjustments and move into different areas. So I think we're doing fine. I think we'll have several positions filled during this month and next month, and I think we'll be fully staffed. We did swear in our police officer vacancy, actually today, so I think that rounds out all of the positions that I'm aware of.
All right, awesome. Couple more things real quick. So had interesting meeting today with Senator Wentworth, and some of the things that just are on the radar out there for some House bills and things is regarding the pop-up tax discussion regarding the Headley Amendment. That is something that is going to be moving swiftly through the House. Also, there is a lot of talk with House Bill forty-seven fifteen and sixteen regarding community solar programs, moving into communities, and also the regional tourism tax on short-term rentals, which is House Bill fifty-one seventy-two and fifty-one seventy-three. Just very interesting how some of these things are coming about, and one of the other real interesting ones is the property tax exemption for community land trust. That one is House Bill forty-seven thirteen. So there's a lot going on there. They are working on a lot of other House bills. And then Michigan Municipal League has their municipal services committee meeting this coming Friday with a list of interesting items on their agenda with some bills that are coming through as well. Going to pass this along to the chief, because most of them all pertain to law enforcement, which is about, I don't know, twelve new bills that are regarding law enforcement, so just give them a heads up. But that's quite interesting, and then my apologies to Fire Chief for not being able to attend our nine-eleven. I really wanted to, but I was actually had... Already had a prior commitment in another community to attend their nine-eleven event, so... But it was... It was very nice to go by there, and it's pretty somber, though, to see all the flags, so it was nicely done. Thank you.
Very good. I have a few things. First, I think it's very good news that the Community House is finally going to be redone. I think this council should be proud of ourselves that we've kind of taken a landmark and really going to move it to the twenty-first century and really set it up for hopefully the next fifty or so years. So again, thank you to everybody. Thank you to Mayor Protam Salvia for being on that committee. I think that's a really good thing. I think Saturday was a really big day in Rochester. We had the nine-eleven memorial, which was really well-done. Fire Chief did a great job, I thought. We had art and apples, and we also had the farmer's market all going at the same time, and it didn't hurt that it was a beautiful day as well. So the town was really booming all afterwards. I went to a restaurant. The restaurants were all very busy, and so it was, you know, really Rochester at its finest. And again, the nine-eleven thing was really nice, and they had the thirty-two-hundred flags put out there. And just so you know, I was talking with the group that put those on, and other communities turned them down to let them do that, so... Which I thought was very interesting, so we were more than happy to have it here, and I thought that was a great, great event. It's always something, right? With that. And then just the last thing is State of the City, August sixth.
October.
October sixth, thank you. And I'm working on that, and it should be good. Hopefully, there will be, you know, no COVID issues, but I think we have a lot of good things to talk about, and I will not be doing brick stuff coming down from the things. I will not be singing. I will not be dancing like another city's mayor does. So it will be basic state of the city, hopefully, so... Without anything further, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. you, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks, Mr. Tim.